Workshop.
Workshop, order. And proceed to our one item of business, and that's you, a review of design materials by the architect. You can take any action as necessary, and of course, the review is intended to be a review of some of the current ideas regarding the theater and beyond the theater. And that's really the questions beyond the theater.
Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize. When I published it, this is really a workshop, and I include it and take any action as necessary. My guess is that he won't be taking any action as necessary, that he would defer. This is really informational.
So with that, all right, I'll leap in. So just, you know, a little bit of background, you know, Kent McCoy, Smith &amp; Co., architects in Hartford, and we're working on the renovation plans for the Memorial Boulevard School. One of the major components of which is getting the theater up and running as a legitimate theater rather than a high school auditorium. You know, with all the kinds of things that a theater needs, like offices, space, and ticket area, and lobby, and concessions, things like that. And also, to make it a professional level theater, have the ability to bring materials to the building, have dressing rooms, costume storage, all that kind of stuff. Our first go around, we had, I think we, the existing theater has 968 seats, fixed seats. Our first go around, we, I think we cut them back to something like 700. Some research and some business planning on the part of the Memorial Boulevard Committee indicated that it might even go smaller, really small then, something like, we looked at 425 seats. The last meeting, though, was a public hearing, and the public came out, I won't say in droves, but they were well represented, and I think without dissent, the feeling was 900 seats.
Is that your reference?
That's what I had written down, was 900 seats, was our directive. So that pushed us into rethinking of where the amenity spaces would go. Hey, how you doing? Good? Good, good. Good bike ride? Yeah. And, you know, and how we would approach the building from a building code and fire safety perspective. So I'll start with the first floor. I guess, all the first floor on this building, which is, you know, the main level of the theater. And what we had previously proposed was that you would enter here at the, you know, the loggia that gets you into the main stair for the theater. And our original concept was to remove all the seats from the back half of the auditorium on the first floor in order to create a lobby, a ticket booth, coat room, and some concession and handicap accessible ramp, sloped floor actually down to the seating area. And then on the second floor, the original concept, you know, there's this sort of stadium style seating that slopes from the second floor to the third floor. The idea was to take most of it out and develop this area as concession and open up the whole room to the vaulted ceiling above, so get rid of the seating there. And then, on the lower level, provide handicap accessibility to the building by raising the floor of the loggia here about three risers, get you in that grade, and hook over to a handicap, to an elevator that would get you up, and you'd hit every level of the building in a new elevator here. And so nobody on the building committee has seen what I'm proposing here today because I'm reacting to the public hearing, but...
What was the elevator? Is that the sign right now?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that was the previous scheme that I was describing. So in order to try to keep the amenity package that we had, but also have the 900 seats, I had to move the elevator and the main lobby function elsewhere in the building. So this revised concept would be that you enter at this stair instead, similar to what we were doing here, you'd pop over and you'd have a handicap lift that would get you up to the floor elevator, because you're entering at each of these stairs. And then, from there, you could get the elevator to take you to any level. So this little lift would be just to make it up the half level from entrance to first floor. And then, the space directly opposite the first floor could be functioned as the lobby kind of reception area. We have tickets and stuff going on here, and you would enter the theater from beside. And then, men's and women's rooms would be developed here, linking the stairs on two levels. And the rest of the building would be developed as a business use occupancies. We'd have Assembly Group A1 and Business Group B here, so they would, you know, mix occupancy in the building. We're also, at this point, proposing a small addition off the rear, right here, sits on top of the existing roof of cafeteria below, that would provide truck dock to get you, to get materials into the building and through the building, and also sort of a green room for actors before they go on stage. So I think in general, that's the overall concept, is it be business use everywhere but the theater and its amenities, that we provide a separation along this line here between the two use groups, and provide accessibility to every level via a lift adjacent to the entrance and an elevator elsewhere in the building. There's also an existing elevator down here that can be, that would be ultimately renovated, you know, for use in the building, but this one won't hit all the stops that we need for the theater, if their floor plates are at different elevations.
What, are you still planning using this as an entrance, though?
No, I think this would be exit only. This would be exit only. So every, in this scheme, in this scheme, everybody would come in this way, whether you're going to the business use or whether you're going to the theater, you'd enter here instead. And that has largely to do with all the function that we had in here got displaced by the seats, the required additional, or requested additional seating.
So what other recourses are you showing besides that main one?
Okay. We have, we're showing three. We have, you know, through these, this stair and out, through this stair and out, and then this one would be through this door into the corridor and out.
Right, and you've done calculations for the actual load and the distance of travel, distance for...
Yeah, travel distance is okay. Occupant load, the only place where a little out of sync with the code is the requirement that, you know, two-thirds of the occupants have to exit through the same doors they entered. We can get two-thirds of the people through here, but not through here. That's, so we're a little out of sync with the code now.
So we want to do, if you can't do it because of the existing conditions, there's no way to technically do it, then prepare modifications for that.
I think we could, oh, to technically do it?
Yeah, technically it's feasible.
I'd have to, I could look at it. I could look at it. It might be a matter of...
And may widen...
Widening some, yeah, widening the corridor here, which might not be a horrible idea. Might actually make the whole thing feel lush like entering a high school auditorium. So I could definitely look at it.
What are these?
Doors, right, you want to hold them back to two-thirds.
It is, yes.
Although as you provide the two-thirds out of the doors going outside, the, like, goes the entryway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So really, you're right, it'd be a matter of changing out these doors and widening corridor a little bit in that location. Yeah, so I mean, that's the simplest way to do it. You know, and then there are some, there are some existing conditions that are a little unusual, but I think the occupancy is so low that, you know, maybe if we do a walkthrough there at some point, it'll be acceptable to you, and that is, from these rigging galleries that run around on the upper levels, you know, I've calculated the occupancy to be about six occupants, and there are two stairs from the rigging galleries down. They have winders in them, they're steeper than normally allowed, and, but, there are two, and, you know, and compared to some catwalks or rigging galleries that you access just by a spiral stair, they're actually better, better conditioned than that, but they're not fully conformant stairs. And then there's one open stair in the, that's wide open to the auditorium itself, but we were saying that one would just be for convenience. It's not part of the egress pattern at all, it's just if you want to get up to your seat, more conveniently use that.
John, do you have anything?
Well, you, and John, you know, nobody on the building committee has seen this before. I just worked on it.
It's about the 900 seats.
Yeah, right, 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 right. But the, I mean, this would be worst case scenario.
Right.
As if we move to reduce the number of seats. If we move, yes, if we move to reduce the number of seats, what would happen is these functions would go back here where they were originally, then actually that two-thirds exiting solves itself, because this is where we have all the extra doors to get you into the wide stair and out. And then this, the break line between business and assembling would be there.
This hallway?
Yeah.
It doesn't service gym area?
Yeah, it would, it would, yeah.
Down into the locker room?
Yeah, goes down into the, so it would mean, you know, modifying the women's locker room on the basement level.
The women's on both sides.
So, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to mess around here to get it in, and then you'd come through here and ramp down. So it would get you to everybody. And then on the level above, you could get, say, from the gym to the mezzanine, either by the stairs or in the elevator, and just pop through here.
That elevator is the same size as the one you initially proposed?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Can I just ask, then, as part of this phase, you would be doing renovations to below the theater, going down into the gym spaces, because I see that you have theater support listed down there.
I don't think we would do anything to it at this point.
Okay, that is one.
Right, but I'm just kind of slating it for that use group from a code perspective. So at some point, whether it were used for costume storage or rehearsal space or something like that, we don't know, but we're assuming it, you know, would be used, theater used because it's not accessible from the business part of the building. But yet, no improvements to it.
Those are two pools.
Right, right, right. And that's decked over, random, both of them.
Decked over. The only shot has...
It's the price of, suits all back in place, where are the concession areas?
Oh, good question. So, the idea for that was that on the, is that the first floor? We could actually provide some kind of concession perhaps, probably in this area, smaller scale, but on the second floor, you've got this area that's in under the stadium seats, it's now storage, but if we did demolish some of this, we could open all this up into that concession area, and you still could get, bring snacks and drinks out to the balcony.
So, this concession area in the second floor, it looks like it would be larger than the one on the third floor.
It would, yeah. And there are more seats on the second floor, too. Yeah.
Any, any issues regarding, you know, moving into the main building?
No, as long as it's separated and protected, it's not really a issue like, you know, you were saying, the doors are going to be, or if you do something with that, I think.
Right, right.
Again, we're going to have to get cranks and check the code, check against the code and see what's happening. Now, a guy had mentioned, you know, doing some kind of modification possibly, so we can look into that too, if that, we may not have to.
Right. So on something like, say, stair rise run, if these main stairs, let's just say the risers have an inch too tall or something, that's...
Right, because they're existing. Right, you want to move the character of it, it'd be technically seasonal, you'd have to change the layout.
Right. I picked a plus on that, too, is that changing views.
Right, right.
So that's a definite plus, plus for code aspect, that also.
The riser run or corny off, but...
A little bit.
And as long as they're consistent?
Yeah.
I think it'll be okay, as long as they're consistent.
Rails.
Yeah, I think rails are going to be...
You may have to need, I don't remember on the first stairways, there's a side rail or not?
Which I don't remember.
The side rail might be a little bit, yeah.
And that just, this may be a bit premature in terms of shifting over the site plan, but how does that fit in context of the overall site, where you're allowing using that as the primary?
I think it fits pretty well in that, you know, our, our parking is really on these three sides, with the bulk of it over here, and we were always proposing, you know, a system of paths and terraces that would come along this side. One of the things I wanted to look at even is if we do bring the main entrance in here, is there, is there the possibility of grading down and lowering the door threshold in this area, get rid of the little handicap lift completely, because I could look at that. But yeah, I think the entrances are not clear from the parking in any case, so I think once you're on that path system and walking around, if we, if we design this well, I think it'll be fine.
If this is a common entrance for both the theater and for the, you know, the business purposes side of things, is there, how do you keep people from, who are going to the theater when the businesses are closed, from wandering down into the business area?
We would have to have a, you know, an intervening set of doors somewhere, I think probably right along this line, you'd have a set of doors that you could, you could lock, so that if you were having an evening performance, people could come in, they could, you know, if this, I know one of Marie's early concepts was, this might be a lobby gallery kind of thing, where you could show the work of some, of the tenants in these various spaces. If we, you know, so there could be locked doors here that would serve to get, you know, you'd still have all three ways out from the theater use, and then during occupancy here, these would be fire doors, you could push them open, still get to that door, you could keep people from wandering through the door.
In addition to that, though, during normal business hours of the business use area, you probably would want the theater area cordoned off from there.
Correct. Correct, and there, there would be fire doors here as well, yeah, and that would be partly to separate it from a fire code perspective, but also for that reason, keep people from getting into the theater wing.
Is that in the budget for you on that?
Oh, we haven't started talking budget at all on this.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not down to that fine level of detail yet, but, you know, we have a conceptual budget, just based on the drawings we've produced to date, but like everyone in the room, Eric is seeing this for the first time.
One of the challenges is that, you know, the more that you get into this, and you start adding different bits and pieces, the further you get away from, you know, you're looking at the programmatic model and shifting away from the budget model, and at some point, they need to reconcile, and that we're, we have quite a ways to go before we get there.
Looking ahead, you're describing a business area. Strictly business, it's going to be mercantile, it's going to be assembly?
Not, not assembly, it'll be, it probably won't be mercantile, probably be, what's been described to me as, is it could be startups, you know, business startups, it could be artist studios, it could be...
Professional offices?
Yeah, could be offices. So mixed use, but falling into the business use category. And I think if there were, let's say they got a tenant who wanted to, his startup was something that you needed specific accommodations in the fire code for, we would have to deal with it on an application basis, and say, look, if you want to have, you want to have light manufacturing in here, we have to go back to the building department, but...
My only thought is, let's say a startup business like a restaurant tour wants to start.
And actually, that's...
So because now you're talking wood duct systems.
Yes, right.
Now we're talking egress issues again, you know, from that side of the building.
Absolutely.
That's something that would have to be thought about.
Right. There's going to have to be restrictions on the work.
Okay. So we're going to concentrate on this, this part of the building, assembly area right now.
Right, yeah, so, yes, the idea was that we'd concentrate on the assembly area and first floor business use only at this point.
Eric, just at first blush, in that, basically, we're moving this function from here to here, would you say that budget wise, we're in the same ballpark?
I'm doing less than that.
Yeah, so, leading witness here.
First blush after a long weekend in Cape Cod, and I remember a hell of a long time. I don't think we're very far outside of the budget, which presented to me, I think we're probably in between, you know, more towards the latter budget, and I'd have to look at it with our estimated budget, and really understand kind of some of the little host school creep downstairs, we're now renovating into that basement further, we weren't including that before, those, you know, like two additional bathrooms downstairs, so, you know, certainly we're not, you know, 30, 40% higher, but I would actually say we're, we're not also reducing costs.
And I just, so you know...
Understanding this area further, I think is the one thing that...
And what I was envisioning here was, you know, no change the scope of work in, in these areas. This is really just, you know, to prepare for this being in terms of use group.
So we're not putting these two...
No, 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 there's not work, no work.
It's not defined, understood.
But we're not doing it.
Gotcha.
So we're not... There will be a stop, about a program for that stuff.
Yeah, so we'd have to hog out for the elevator and...
Right, make a connection and ramp down, but in terms of the use group, that's...
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so don't be alarmed by, you know, a lot of persons, all that, that's not...
Now, in terms of the addition, any foreseen issues?
Addition meaning, and the reader?
No, the physical addition to the building, to put that with...
No, as long as, I mean, structurally, building may have something, some issue with it, you have to check, see what can support.
Yeah, and, you know, our structural engineer will, will go through that with us. What we're envisioning is really a one-story lightweight, like steel stud.
More like a storage area, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would be, it'll, it will be heated and conditioned, but it's to provide, you know, backstage area that the stage doesn't presently have.
Right, again, so as long as it's spread for, and, you know, there's an alarm, and doors to get out, that's not an issue.
Right, and structurally, we'll, we'll deal with it. There is a row of concrete piers below here.
That's right above...
The cafeteria.
That's the pool.
Cafeteria is under here, this is, there is the, that's the pool. This is the...
Chemicals.
Boiler room, the, the long corridor here that goes into the tunnel that goes around the pool, a whole bunch of stuff in there.
Right.
I can show you. Originally, this was all glass.
Right.
So...
Oh, was it?
Yeah. And you can see the associated underneath, and all the boiler life给你们 from these little glass bottles.
So the, our addition sits right on top of this concrete wall. So this is the, the old swimming pool that's already, you know, decked over, this was a shower room adjacent to the pool.
There's a house back in here, there's a whole variety of stuff.
Yeah.
It's all the kids.
Yeah. One of the struggles that they've had is in terms of getting in a lot of the stage equipment, some of that heavy stuff, there really wasn't a loading dock per se to bring in heavy equipment. So by adding the loading dock, it basically means a means...
There's an access.
It's a means of entry for a lot of the heavy things that normally would be coming upstairs.
Can't really think, single story, two story, story addition for actually?
One story.
That makes it safe.
Yeah, it does. When it's built on top of the roof like that, it ends up, the floor plate ends up being sort of an ideal truck dock height, and also it's about 30 to 36 inches above the grade, and then we would have to have a lift, whether it's inside or outside, then to get up to stage elevation, which is another four feet of that.
If, the other thing you need to look at with the 900 seats is, you've got to talk to the zoning people because of the requirement of parking requirements.
Right, right.
Because obviously they're much higher.
Right, yeah.
Would be 500 seats.
Yeah, and I know they've been talking about the ability to use the lock across the street, which is great, but in the past, zoning has required written agreements. They won't accept verbal agreements.
Yeah, yeah, you won't get one.
No. And it's going to be, that's what I'm telling you, John. I'm, I'm just raising this because I know.
No, you're right, yeah.
They require written agreements, and if they can't get one, then we're going to have a problem with parking. That's all.
Right, right. One of the risks of going to the higher number of seats.
Exactly, exactly.
And we can, we can approach them again. I've had 20 conversations with them over this 1967 and...
I've sat in applications where we would not accept verbal, we make them go back and get written, so I don't think they're going to make an exception in this case.
Does parking on the east side of the building help at all? Like, if we could grade that, if you could grade that down, the wall parking?
Well, I think you looked at that at one point, you had parking inside.
The backside?
No, the front ramp, the main entrance.
Well, that was always parked, when it was a high school, it was always parked. All the staff parked.
Well, since, I can rationalize it.
Well, this last generation sure does, as like a plaza.
Right.
So like, even the handicap parking, we made it for that, also?
Yeah, I mean, I could see that it makes sense to at least get vehicles to be able to go, all the, you know, fire vehicles particularly, that'll be useful, but...
And then they were talking about abandoning that portion of Willis Street at some point?
They were, I don't know what happened to that.
I think it's still up in the air, I don't, I don't think it's decisions they made, but they were talking about it, so maybe that's a pursuit.
Right, that was...
You could add parking.
However, I'd expected this evening's meeting would have a full discussion of the seating capacity.
I mean, that was, that was not always there.
Right.
I think you may want to have an answer to that question.
Yeah.
To the seating.
Right, because even next season, 450 seats, we weren't meeting zoning. We were a little, a little short. At 900 seats, we're possibly short.
Impossible, that's what I'm saying, so, I mean, you may, just because of that, this may not be feasible.
What is the seat, and what is the part, what's the ratio?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
One to 1.5, 1.5 seats per car. Yeah.
It's a lot of cars.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
600 spaces then?
Yeah, and I think we've got 130 or something like that. Which I, when we were looking at the lower occupancies, that's one of the things that we presented as a plus, was that it brings you closer to performance. Right, though.
So you're talking about parking upside, because people now park on both sides of Willis Street.
Right, right, we didn't include Willis Street.
Which is a problem, because they can't.
Yeah.
That's not restricted, but I don't know how many that will be.
I'll count that out.
We're only... We're not going to give us 600 plus parking.
No, nope.
Okay, anything else? Any questions?
I guess in general, would your preference be on this, that we, we go with the, you know, fire safety code and the building code, not do chapter 34 historic building? Just kind of...
It has a preference, but you may have to go into chapter 31.
Or something, okay.
Which says the existing stairs and get around and...
So can I just ask one quick question? We're, since we're relocating the main entrance, what does that do to the exterior visibility of the structure in context of our federal legislature application?
No change, no change. So the, the work that we were proposing at this loggia, we just moved to here, where we would gently do a sloped walk up to it, raise the loggia floor by three risers, so no change. Just a quick question.
You may definitely want to do some of the, some of chapter 34, because you get a lot of exceptions, and they're four in the same use.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, I mean, you may...
It might be a hybrid approach.
You may, one use, like, it's an A, you go into an X.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
So I think the stairs may be fine.
Yeah.
So you may want to try to tie them together to help you, you know, definitely help financial profitability.
Is it clear to say the...
Existing buildings.
Existing buildings. You're not using the main entrance as your fire end building, or just grand entrance?
Yeah.
You lose that aesthetic.
They go back and forth.
For the theater?
For, yeah, that theater, the grand entrance. You lose all that because now you're going into, just aesthetically speaking.
Yeah, well, the, the kind of central entrance to the building is, is even grander in one sense, you know, the stairs even a little wider, and you come up, and, you know, the hallway is finished a little better there. I think where you lose it is from that point into the theater, it narrows down to a high school corridor, you know, with... school corridor, you know, with a pair of doors at the end, but because the code is going to require more doors at that location anyway, we'll widen that up. I think we can make that transition from the historic lobby to the theater, we can make it all, it'll still have one experience, so I don't think we'll lose that, you know.
Okay, with that, Eric Davis.
Motion for chair?
So, second, is this an official meeting?
Hmm? It is, it is.
It's an official workshop.
Motion, Dave, seconded all in favor? All right, I'm opposed. So, well, thank you, gentlemen, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.